Like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Janie Appleby?
Here.
Bruce Gage?
Here.
Nick Gunderson?
Here.
Nick Kent?
Here.
Rich Leckie is absent today, and Keith Nedowski is absent.
Okay. All right, we have two absent tonight. Both are excused. One is at school, and one is in the military, doing his weekend duties. And entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Fledges of allegiance.
Oh, yeah. Fledged.
Oh, we didn't do the pledge of allegiance. Sorry. Please join us, Pledge of Allegiance. Fledges of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America's citizens. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting from May 16.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, approve the regular council meeting minutes from May 16. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce our police chief, Jerry Prochak. He's gonna make a special presentation here, well deserved. Jerry, you got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. In October 2007, Adam John Thomas Rogie was offered and accepted a full-time position as a patrolman for the City of Wyoming Police Department. Between 2007 and today, Corporal Rogie has undergone extensive training specializing in drug detection and enforcement. He has dedicated countless hours away from his family doing his job, and doing it very well. From time to time in law enforcement, we are criticized for making high-profile traffic stops or too many traffic stops, but this doesn't bother us, and it doesn't bother Adam either. Over the last couple of years, Adam has identified and tracked the increase of heroin use here. He also knows who's buying it, who's selling it, and what they drive. He has a unique knack for getting drug arrests and doing it flawlessly. He's been acknowledged as being a professional and an expert in this field. In 2015, Wyoming Police Department had 171 drug arrests. Adam had his hand involved directly or indirectly in most. It is his passion. To further describe his work ethic, I would describe one of the many calls Adam has taken. Early in 2016, Adam and a new officer he was training received a call for service. This was one of the calls that we don't like to get. It involved an intoxicated individual who was armed with a loaded handgun. Upon arrival, it was unclear if it was a suicide situation, suicide by cop, or potentially a hostage situation. Adam was able to de-escalate the situation using verbal judo the whole time, continuing to keep an eye on his charge and keeping it a training situation. The individual was taken into custody without incident and received the help he needed. There are many other situations I could elaborate on, but I've chosen not to, to keep this brief. With that, on behalf of the City of Wyoming, City Wyoming Police Department, Willpaca County Executive Law Enforcement Officers Association, and the State of Wisconsin, I'm proud and pleased to present Adam John Thomas Rogie with the exceptional service of work. So there's two different medals in here. One is for him to display however he chooses, and this would be the one that he'd wear on his uniform for the rest of his career. Sergeant Leckie has one, that's where it would be worn on his uniform. Congratulations.[261.72][261.72][applause] Good job, Adam. Thank you. I don't expect all those who came to see that for Adam's family to sit through the rest of the meeting, so if you guys wanna take off, or you're welcome to stay.[290.52][290.52][laughter]
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Okay. Now we go to citizen appearances. Frank Saboy, you're at the floor.
Thank you. Basically, all's quiet on the front at the library. I'm sorry to say enrollment on the library is still going down somewhat, and it was down in the very low teens for this entire last year. Part of that, I think, the job market has improved considerably, the people that use those computers, the adults are no longer in need of those computers. But we're holding steady enough that we're happy, and we're certainly competing with the libraries in our area. We had the ice cream social, we had 152 people at that ice cream social, so we were quite pleased. Other than that, if you have some questions, I will be happy to answer. If not, that's basically my report.
Anybody got any questions for Frank? Thanks much, Frank. Next, we have Mark. You're at the floor.
Thank you. My name is Mark Saffir. I'm a candidate for Willpaca County Treasurer, and first of all, I'd like to congratulate you on the beautiful facility. This is very impressive. Give you a little background about myself. I've been a lifelong Willpaca County resident. I grew up in Marion. I have lived in Iowa the last 28 years with my wife, Sarah, where we raise our two children, Josh and Emily. My son, Josh, is a graduate of UW Madison and works at the Madison area. My daughter is a sophomore at UW La Crosse. As far as my personal end of it, I have an associate's degree in banking and finance. I worked for Mills Fleet Farm for 17 years in retail management. I ran the, started the Clintonville store, I worked in Stevens Point as assistant manager, moved on and ran the Willpaca store for six years, and I went to the Marshfield store. At that point's when I decided I wanted to stay and raise my children in Iowa, so that's when I left Mills Fleet Farm. I worked for Premier Bank for the last 12 years as a branch manager and a loan officer, where obviously I worked at financials every single day, worked with customers, dealing with situations, obviously everything for collections to the positive part of banking, so I think I can offer a lot to our different services of Willpaca County. As you can see with some of my personal end of it, as far as board directors, I'm the board director for the Iowa car show. Very honored to be the board director for the Crowsey Foundation, which will carry on the legacy of Chuck Crowsey. I'm also on the Iowa Living Assistance Board, and also on Dupont International Insurance Board, so I think a lot of those things have helped me, that will offer some good things to the county, whether I'm working with the different departments within the county, or the townships, or the cities. So I think I can bring a lot of different things to the table. As you can see on there, I'm also very community-oriented. I'm on the school board, finance committee. I also sit on the city or village of Iowa, their variance board, so very much care for our county, and I think I can bring a lot of things to the table. I'm a graduate of leadership of Willpaca County, and I sit on the economic development, the Willpaca County Economic Development Court, the revolving loan committee. We sit together on that, so I think I like bringing a lot of skills, and appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and appreciate your support on August night.
Thank you.
So information under, if there's one of you or any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good to see you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Next, we got Kathy Pearson.
I'm here because I received a letter. I must have had a meeting last month or whatever, and I, my husband, both received the letter, and in that letter, it's stating we have 30 days to clean up our mess. I am here because 30 days is not enough, and I'm just wondering what you guys want to do.
Do you have a, do you have a champion letter?
I did, I did try to have a meeting before this with Patrick, and I asked him to have a meeting there, and somehow, we never got together, and just, I guess, you didn't call back, and it didn't work out. So that's why I'm here today, because the 30 days is, if you're calling the 30 days, the 30 days is up on June, what, 28th or something, and it's not gonna happen.
Well, Kathy, bottom line is, there's a couple of things going on here. Tonight, this council can't do anything about it, because technically, it's not on the agenda. Number two, this council did not send you that letter. That came from the building inspector, and technically, he has the rule when it comes to all buildings and facilities in the city, and he has the authority to write a letter like this and demand it.
He may have the authority to write that letter, maybe, but we did not apply for a building permit, we did not do that, so therefore, I don't believe we should have gotten a letter like that, not like that. And I feel if there was a problem, come to us and talk to us about the problem. We could maybe solve it, or whatever, and I will point out one other thing. It may, it may be an ice store, you may not like it. It's not that we have not been working on it, and now another situation has come up, and I'm telling you, it's gonna be a while before we can finish up that project. It isn't like we weren't trying to finish, do that, do that project there, and it's just gonna take a while.
All right, your next plan would probably be write a letter to the building inspector, not to us, to the building inspector, explaining what you're gonna do and what your plan is, and then he has the authority to read it over and make a consideration of it. If not, within 30 days, you'll get another letter demanding something that he has the authority to tell the city, or to hire somebody to go in and do it. That's, bottom line, that's the law. But write him a letter, explain to him what your plans are, and ask for an extension of some kind, if that's available, and see what he says about it.
I hope it is, because if, you know, if you're, if he or whoever is comparing this with whoever else for these, you know, with these letters that were sent out, you know, our project there is about 10 times bigger than somebody else's project is, if that's how you guys are comparing all of this. So, the 30 days for somebody else may be great, the 30 days for another person may not be, and then you throw in another situation like we've got going, and it's, you know, it's almost impossible right now.
And I, and we all understand that, and we do understand your situation, but bottom line, he has the authority, we can't change that right now. Write him a letter, like I said, explain what's going on, or what you would like, an extension, and see where he goes with it, and if it comes back to us, then we can act on it.
Okay, I didn't know that, you know, that it was basically from him, or whatever, but like I said, we didn't apply for building permits or anything right now. I don't understand why that part of it, why we got the letter from him.
Well, you didn't, you're not the only one. There were several that went out.
I know, but I don't wanna, I'm not comparing my, I think when I talked to Patrick, I'm not comparing myself to anybody else, I'm comparing myself to me. My problem, what we've got. I don't care about somebody else down the street, or whatever. It's my problem, and I, and it isn't, it isn't like we don't know that we have the problem. We've been very concerned about it ourselves. I just wanna make that very clear. It's just that, like I said, I've got, we've got a really major issue going on here, and that is more important right now than the issue at hand that I'm talking about. So, you know, that's just the way it is.
That's, we appreciate that, but like I said, explain that in the letter to them and see where it goes.
All right.
We'll do what we can for you.
And then the other, the other thing I would like to say, too, is, before all of that happened over there, too, I really wish, I have come in and I have complained about people, and I know that happens, I don't know how to explain this, but I know it happens, it happens probably to everybody else, or somebody else down the street, too, or what have you, but before all of that is the way it is down there, there has been a lot of people going down there, taking stuff and stealing stuff and whatever else, and I have reported that, and I never got a call back saying that they were gonna check on it, or at least watch it once in a while, or what have you. And, you know, and down by the bridge there, you've got a lot of people, you've got a lot of people going down there, under the bridge, doing their, whatever they're doing down there. They walk all the way along across the shoreline, way into the back, doing whatever they're gonna do over there. I would think you guys would wanna kinda watch that a little bit. You know, first of all, they're on private property, that's, I guess, my problem, but the problem the city has, they're down there by the bridge, painting and doing their graffiti and whatever else they're doing down there, plus they're walking all the way across, going wherever else they are. I think that is a concern that you guys should watch a little closer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Mary Jane, you're on here, you got?
No, I don't have anything necessarily to bring. I just wanted to hear where you're gonna go with the community center, and if they're, if you're gonna be making up the rules and stuff tonight. I just wanted to hear, Bruce, what they were.
So there's two items that are on the agenda. One is the community room rental guidelines.
Yes.
Which are a recommendation, and then at the committee, they had mentioned that events put on by any type of group would not have an automatic discount or waiver of fees, and so what the recreation committee had recommended was, anytime anybody was looking for a fee reduction, they should pick it up on a case-by-case basis. So you do have an item under new business, in the event that you would approve the community room rental guidelines, that historical society would like to request a waiver of the fees for their history of cheesy guts this Thursday. So we do have that on the agenda. It is on the agenda, under new business.
Okay. We'll move along with committee reports. Public Works, Bruce.
Discussion on possible action, A15 change order number four, minor construction,
So this is listed as a discussion, possible action. The committee did review the change order, and semi-formally approved the change order as part of the pay request, but we didn't have the change order outlined on the agenda, and so here, there was no recommendation to vote on, other than the fact that they recommended approving the pay request that had this amount in there. So what you would need is, is a motion to, one way or the other, with the change order number four for the Trippin' Park project.
Does that make a motion for the change order?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, approve the change order, A15. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Recommended approval for A16 pay request number 12, minor construction, $117,579.04. Contingence for, you seek the lien waiver.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, recommend approval, A15, request number 12. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Recommended approval for A16 change order number 1, VIN construction, $7,765.06.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, A16 change order number 1 to VIN construction.
Most of, most of that is on the parking lot project. There is one item for the Cooks' property on the corner of West Main and Lakeshore Drive. We added, we had a meeting on site with Cooks', and the intent of putting in the retaining wall was that we wouldn't slope their yard significantly. What we found was, we put in the base for the wall, we put in the wall, and there was still gonna be some slope, so what we did is, we added another layer of block on three-quarters of the western end, and they're happy with it. So that's, that's really what we're looking at with the change order there, is a little bit of parking lot, extra material that was unforeseen, and then extra material for that retaining wall.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, number 4.
Recommended approval for A16 pay request number 1, VIN construction, $155,684.06.
I'll second it.
Any questions on that?
Just a quick comment, we did give them four weeks to get the parking lot, the manholes, the sidewalk in East Alfred, and the retaining wall, and they were done in just under three weeks, so that's nice when that happens that way. This is, you don't have any contingencies for lien waivers, because this is the first payment we're sending, so there is nothing else to have a lien on, and for the most part, this is gonna be the bulk of the project, except for the payment on the lights, and the lights came in about a month earlier, and they're now installed in the back parking lot. The only thing that we have left is, we are looking with Silver Mist for some landscaping, trees, probably some bushes, and then some flowers, too, to get that, and get that in tip-top shape before the July 9th open house of the building.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Recommend approval to Hetherside City Option to Continue Harpers Flack Valley in Recreation Residential Garbage Recycling Vendor for 2017 residential.
I'll second that.
Okay, that's easy to explain, that we had a two-year contract with Harpers, and a possibility or an extension of possible third year with no change in price, or no raise in price or not.
No more than 2%, is what it is, yeah. But it's similar terms that we've had the first two years.
Same terms as what the last two years were, so.
Yep.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Recommendation on Cedar LOA for wastewater treatment plant rotary press upgrades.
We're gonna ask to hold that item. We did talk with Cedar Corp about the rotary sludge press. This is where we de-water our slugs, we make cake, and that's, we won't go any deeper than that, but we did spend some more money on a rotary press, because it's self-contained, it's more automated, you can set it and essentially forget it, it can run on its own. There are some accessory equipment items that maybe were overlooked during the design, and so there's, this rotary press that's supposed to be running more efficiently is not at the moment. Cedar had put together a, a letter or memo with some of their observations, and I had asked them not to have it for Public Works, but I gave them all of it last week, and when we got the memo on Friday, we do have a couple of questions for them to follow-up on, so I don't think we're ready to act on this tonight, so I would ask that we hold that. I did talk to Cedar about that as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Finance Committee, Keith's gone, Mike, you wanna take it?
Mike Kent, Shane Kent. Make a motion to, what was it, C15 change order number 6 for Emo, $11,433.54.
I'll second that.
Number one, motion made and seconded, to pay change order number 6 to Emo. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the checks, number 32302 through 32379, totaling
I'll second that.
All right, any questions on that? All in favor, say aye. Roll call.
Appleby?
Aye.
Gage?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Just a quick note, the finance committee met right before this meeting, so that's why you do have the recommendations on here, rather than actual recommendations. The items number 2 and 3, city hall storage shelving and the municipal building cleaning quotes, the finance committee has held, and so that's why there's no action on that. And then, just the only outlier that we have is that for the city hall project, we did not get a pay request from Emo this month. We owe them a couple hundred thousand dollars yet on this building, but we did not get a pay request, and so with that, there is nothing to review and approve.
Police and fire, Mike.
Make a motion to approve the part-time police employee ballistic vest reimbursement
Motion made and seconded, approve part-time police employee ballistic vest reimbursement policy. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Public Health.
No action for council.
Thank you. Rec Committee, Nick.
Make a motion to approve the committee room rental guidelines rates.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, approve community room rental guidelines and rates. Questions?
Quick note, there were a couple of questions on some indemnification for the city, so we had said that if people lose their items or break their items, we wouldn't be held responsible, and also, we'll get to this, and I'm doing it a little bit backwards, but the committee is recommending that alcoholic beverages would be allowed to be brought in for private parties, not for sale, not for open public parties, but there were some items in there related to language on identifying the city in case there would be underage drinking, and so the committee had recommended approval of these guidelines. They also recommended that Attorney County review those to make sure that we're all in the up and up, and so the document in front of you is a cleaned-up version, essentially with the same notes that we were looking for, but it does clean up the city's rights and identifications, reduces our liability. Basically, what we're looking at with the community room rentals, they're, the only difference right now between residents and non-residents is that going forward, residents will be able to reserve the room, starting December 1st, for the next year. January 1st, then, we would open it up to everyone else. We do have rental applications that will be required. Rentals can only be made by people that are 21-years-old, and they will be held solely responsible for anything that is not cleaned, anything that's damaged. They're also responsible to be there during the entirety of the event. We do have a note in there that all fees and security deposits would be required before the reservation is considered finalized. Rental times, the committee has, did not recommend a, an early time, so like start time, but what they did say instead was that all events are allowed to run until 10:00 PM in that room, no later. Number five, then, is a security deposit would be, depending on the nature of the use of the community room, would be required with the attached schedule, which is what we'll go through next. We do have AV equipment in there. You'll remember when we were looking at the audiovisual for this building, we did put some significant work into wireless microphones, two 70-inch TVs that wirelessly can connect to a laptop or a portable device for PowerPoint, movies, videos, those types of things. What we did put in here is that there is an additional fee in the security deposit for the use of the AV equipment. Again, alcoholic beverages, that was one item that the committee had talked about for a couple of months, but what they're recommending is that you can have them in the community room for private parties, but only in the community room, so you can't take it out in the parking lot into the lobby or anything like that. Again, there is language in here that says that the renter is responsible for compliance with all liquor laws, and also they're liable for any underage drinking or anything like that, that's what happens. We do have a note in here that for damages, the renter's gonna be responsible for any and all damage to the community room, and then cleanup, we do have in there that people have to clean up after themselves. If they do not clean up, and the city has to clean up, there will be a $50 per hour charge, which was recommended by the committee. The only other item that we have in here, two items, one is that we have a warming kitchen, so the preparation of food is not going to be allowed, because we're not licensed to prep food. It'll be a warming kitchen. And the other item, then, too, which is the very last And the other item then too, which is the very last item, is the city's discretion to close the event. And what we mean by that is the committee had talked about if there's alcohol or if an event becomes unruly, does the city maintain their ability to either stop the use of alcohol or stop the event? And Attorney County is recommending that you do not mess around with language on stopping alcohol. That if you get to an event where you're in that bad of a situation, that the police department would have the ability to just stop an event completely. And there would be, in that situation, that there's language in here recommended by the city attorney that says there would be no refund on any fees or security deposits if that would happen. Again, that was checked out by the attorney. The last page, this will be super quick, it's related to the rental rates. The committee wanted to keep it simple. They have an hourly rate of twenty dollars an hour or a daily rate of eighty dollars for the day to rent the room. Doesn't matter if you're resident, non-resident, it's just those are the straightforward rates. If you're looking to use or access the audiovisual equipment or the wireless internet, there would be an additional charge of twenty-five dollars. And for community room security deposits, what we would have here is if you're planning on just having some type of a social gathering without food, it's likely that you won't be as messy, so the security deposit would be fifty dollars. If you have food, it would be one hundred dollars. And if you're looking to use the AV equipment, we have wireless microphones, remote controls, TVs. There would be a fifty-dollar security deposit on those items too. And the two notes that I have here are that regular meetings of nonprofit or community groups will have no charge and those will be recommended to be moved either to the back half of this room or the other conference rooms. So the Rec, the Rec Committee was hoping that regular meetings wouldn't so much be in the community room, but they would be in other designated and appropriate facilities. And then the bottom line then is that there's a differentiation between meetings and events. Events that are sponsored by nonprofit or community groups will be subject to rental fees. Fee waiver requests will be considered by the city council on a case-by-case basis. And that gets to what I mentioned before, that we have this policy here. And in the event that there would be an event that somebody would be looking for a fee waiver, they could make that request to the city council. Any questions at all on that?
I have one question.
Yes.
So we didn't set a timeframe for people using the community room? So when the Meals on Meals program gets to here, which is looking more towards fall is what I'm told, how is that going to work because I'm going to need certain frame time of being able to operate?
Right. So the way, the way we would teach that, the reason they didn't put a, an early time is because we've already had a training event with Presto where they started like at six AM. And so what we initially thought was that maybe we'd have like an eight AM start time, but for an event like that, we just figured that most events, people aren't going to start at six in the morning for a birthday party or something like that. But when it comes to reserving this room, if there is an outside agreement made with, say, the county or the Senior Meals program, that would be treated as a reservation by contract, which is what we're going to be looking at. And you're right, from what I know, we're looking at probably September first is a target date to have that here. We would have an agreement and then the reservation would basically block off whatever time period for Senior Meals.
Right, those hours would just always be on the calendar then.
So they'd already be reserved and unavailable then.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right, any more questions? We still got a motion on the board?
But you have two questions.
Motion made and seconded, approve this rental guidelines.
Is it your hands up maybe?
All right.
It's up to you if you'd like to pick.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mary.
Do they have access, the guests, do they have access from both the front door and back door or just the back door?
Uh, the way this will work is, so all the doors lock, but we will hand out key cards to whoever's using the facility or renting the facility. They should be able to get the back door by the kitchen and the back door by the parking lot too. We'd encourage that the main entrance would be the, the main middle building of the parking lot. Does that make sense?
Yeah. The main, the main entrance off the parking.
Well, there's two, there's two back doors, there's two back doors, but yeah. And then the other thing we can do too is we can schedule doors to be open at certain times. Because if you have a party, you're not going to want people to use their key card to open up the doors.
Well, if you use it, with that key card that you're mentioning, isn't, wouldn't it be like a, a card? And then let's say Mary rented it, or whatever, got the card, using it for her event or whatever. And then when you're, you're done, I mean, shouldn't that code only be good in that card for so long? And so therefore, either way, if the card is turned in, if it doesn't get turned in, the card isn't any good. Is that how that's going to work?
That's a good question. So we don't program the cards. We program the building to accept cards. So like the card will have letter A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And we could go out and say, okay, A through E are good to go Saturday from eight to noon, but F would not be good. And so the way we've used it already is we had like the police lockers were installed in the basement and they requested to get into the building early to put lockers in the basement here. And so we programmed a card that would be good for two days from noon one day till six PM the next day. That would be nice to get the cards back, but if we don't, we, we, essentially we schedule the cards and then they're really no good after the day that we turn them off.
Then I have a question. If I understood you correctly when you were talking about this, you're saying in December of every year, it would be, that's would be December first, is that correct? You would have it open to where the, the people, the residents of the city or whatever could book first or however.
Yep.
And then January would be somebody.
It would be open to everybody, the residents still could.
Why, why, why don't, I, to me, I think that's a little confusing. Because most people, if they're gonna, if they're gonna want a place, let's say, and they're going to want to, you know, use that room or what have you. I, I think December, they think, you know, so many other things going on and December is the end of the year. They don't think of that? Why don't you make it the first day after the, of the new year? First, or do like a first come, first served event, do it the first day after the year, use that month or whatever if you want or however for the residents and then after that, at the end of the month, it can be for non-residents and then leave it kind of open. Or do a first of the year, the first workday after the first of the year and then first come, first served.
Yeah, and we could go a number of ways. I think the intent for December first was if it's, if it's open January first to residents and then later it's open to non-residents, essentially if a non-resident wants to have an event early in January, we didn't want to not allow them to rent the building.
Yeah, but it would be, you'd already have that, it would already be out there because if you started from January, you started as Janu, at January, the first working day of the year.
Yep.
Do it that way, then it's already open to the end of December or to the first of, you know, it, it would be, you know.
Yeah, so we're, we're only reserving right now a calendar year at a time. And we're hoping that everyone has the ability to rent starting January first. But the carrot to the residents is that in December, they'll be able to rent for the rest of the year. And right now, we do with shelters, January first.
Is this going to be on a computer too, like where it shows like?
It'll be posted, yeah.
I mean, on a computer where if somebody's got it, it's blacked out, so if somebody wants to look at it, they can, you know, if the day is taken, you know, gee, it's already taken, so I got to pick another day after you do.
We're gonna, we're, we'll consider that. The way we do it right now is with the shelters, we just have it marked in the office. So people either come into the office or they'll call and say, is my day open?
Yeah, the reason I brought that up is, excuse me, the reason I brought that up is because I had to, I had to do that with Pampa about years ago. And the way they do, they're all their parks, so to say. It's the first business day after the first of the year. And it's open to anybody, everybody, but it's first come, first served. You want a place, you get there at six AM in the morning or whatever, but it's first come, first served. And I was amazed at how it works. And every weekend for the summer was booked by the end of that day. And then it's posted, so if you want, you want a day, you can, you know, at least look at it and decide if you have to pick something else. I think that, to me, I thought it was a little easier than doing December and January, I think it's, you know, I just think it's a little confusing.
Yeah, the, the big thing is because we're not giving a discount for residents, we're letting them to have first crack at the interior.
I don't think they give a discount in here. But I, that's all this.
Sure, sure.
The question I have is, I know that you want to let the residents have it first. Would you consider like the nonprofit organizations as part of the residency? Because needless to say, I'm not a resident of the city of Waiauaka, but I would represent, you know, probably a couple of different organizations. So where, where would that kind of fit in?
So that's a good question. And the intent of getting this policy in here, it's only about a page and a half. Intent is that we have rental rules to get going and rent out the room. And knowing that next year's reservation, starting in December, which is when you may run into that issue, where December first residents could, but your question is at what point might you be able to with a city group?
Like say the historical society.
So the attempt is, so we're in June right now, July, August and September, we're going to be expanding on this policy and probably building it out to accommodate those types of situations. But for right now, we knew that we were in June, if this is approved tonight, anyone's able to reserve it. Now for the rest of the year, there's no benefit to residents or non. But really what we needed is because we're in the room, we just, we need the rules down first and then the coordination and building up the policy we'll work on like probably here.
Now you're just looking at individuals rather than the organizations.
Right, right, yeah, I understand what you're saying. That's something we'll look at for sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we can have a vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. That's public property, it says an election for the council. Buying commission, no action for the council. New business. Consider an appeal for a driveway permit for the Hill Scotter family on Mary Street. This is pretty standard, they're building a double garage. They want to build a thirty-six-foot garage and put a two-foot wide driveway on each side. They want an entrance forty feet. Any questions on it?
Just a, a quick comment. You do have a letter from Ms. Hill Scotter requesting an appeal and you'll see that she references city ordinance. They also have the letter that I had sent to her. The current city ordinance outlines the widest residential driveway as a triple-width driveway. And it outlines that the widest driveway you can build by ordinance is no wider than thirty feet. And so in talking with the Hill Scotters, I know they were looking at a much wider distance. And I believe that they've reduced it probably considerably. But the ordinance doesn't allow myself or the Public Works Supervisor to approve any driveway wider than thirty feet. So we cannot approve a driveway permit. But the ordinance does say that anyone who has refused a permit, they all have the ability to appeal direct to the city council. And so essentially what you're looking at then is their request to build a driveway that starts at thirty-six feet wide and then expands to forty at the road. Essentially, they're asking you for approval to build that driveway.
Can I get a motion on it?
What is it, a horseshoe-type driveway or what?
Not a.
No, it's just straight out of the garage.
It just fans out like two feet on each side of the garage. But the garage is thirty-six feet and the ordinance says thirty feet and so. And right now, my two driveways actually have fifty feet, a few, uh, so I'm actually asking to reduce it by ten feet from what I have now.
Basically, they got a double garage, couple of straight out, put a road. So you just want a permit to have the driveway two foot wider on each side. But we got to have a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay. I'm going to go a second.
I don't know, I'd like to see the whole, the whole ordinance looked at at the ordinance committee. What troubles me in this, and I will second it, just so you know that. But what troubles me with this is, is this goes back to passing an ordinance that, that we passed. It was essentially for five people and not for a city. You know, sometimes I think we have to look at the magnitude of, of ordinance that you're passing and realize the ripple effects of everything. Now, that being said, like I said, because there are some other ones in, in town, I, I will second the.
There's several, Sean, I want to look at them.
I've been.
Within two blocks of this, there's.
I, I've been up and down the streets.
Several of them even wider than that.
Right, my issue isn't with that, it's with passing ordinances that don't, aren't looking at the city as a whole.
The ripple don't affect.
You know, and I, I would like people to start looking at what they're doing.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mike? Negative? Aye? Aye?
You asked for an aye.
Okay. Motion carried, thank you.
You asked for an aye, I didn't say aye.
I didn't hear you.
You asked for an aye, I didn't say aye.
I didn't say anything, was that a nay?
Nay.
Nay, okay.
If you ask for it.
Three to one, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up here. Consider a street use permit for Jack's Corner Bar. He wants to have a closing party. He's going to hire a band, put a tent up on the side street. Anybody got questions on it? Can I get a motion on it?
I'll make a motion to approve. The street use permit for Jack's Corner Bar on June twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Yeah, he's going to, he talked to me about it. It's not a free beer, free-for-all type thing. He's still, he's going to have music, but he's don't pricing or selling cheaper his inventory. It's not a free-for-all, so.
Oh, I withdraw it then. I misunderstood.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second? Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Consider an appointment to the Board of Review. Is that Jim Dessens?
Yes, did you, you talked to Mr. Dessens? He's all on board with him?
I think you all know, well, maybe you all don't, I know you do and I know Mike does. Jim Dessens was on the council for several years, he's been on them. I'm asking for a motion to approve appointment of Jim Dessens to the Board of Review.
I'll make a point, a motion to appoint Jim Dessens to the Board.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, approve Jim Dessens, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Now we're down to, oh, Mary left, the historical society, community room waiver fee for June twenty-third.
So they're, they're looking at holding the history of cheese event on Thursday night? And as we were talking at the Rec Committee about the policy, I knew in the back of my head that they were already looking at using the room. And I knew in the back of my head that they had probably an expectation that they could use the room. We'd never talked about whether it was free or discounted, but I had the anticipation that they'd be looking for a free use. But that being said, we have not had a rental policy in effect until tonight, so I do appreciate that. What we're looking at is the cheese event Thursday night, I think it's set for about five-thirty, two to three hours. And if it's up to three hours, the hourly rate would be twenty dollars an hour, up to sixty dollars an hour. They have Richard Wagner, Dan Sterns and a couple others are looking at putting on PowerPoints, the use of the TVs. If that is the case with microphones and TVs, we'd also be looking at a twenty-five dollar charge. We're probably looking at about eighty-five dollars to rent the facility. The other item that was reviewed by the committee, which is an item that gets at whether or not this is a fundraising event or just an event, was the fact that they are looking to charge five dollars per person for people that want to taste test the macaroni and cheese that they're going to have from a cooking contest. And so with that, some of the conversation at the Rec Committee was based on whether or not there should be a fee waiver based on whether or not you're charging. And we never really got anywhere with it other than the Rec Committee said, charge everyone and if they would like to have a fee waiver, have them come to the council. So I apologize in that, you've just got a policy, they're looking at the event next Thursday, but it seems like an appropriate time to consider a request to waive the fees.
This coming Thursday, right?
Yes. Yes.
Let your wishes. Gotta have a motion either way.
I guess I have mixed feelings on this because, you know, we have the policy set and we got the nonprofits wanting to use it for, you know, different things like this event coming up. So where do we draw the line of not charging and charging? So we're gonna end up having to be, having meetings, probably after meetings, to go through every single waiver. Why couldn't we just agree on maybe a discounted price for them to use the room? Fair enough where they're still paying something and they still get to use the room, or we're not having to sit and go through countless waivers every time somebody wants to use it that's a nonprofit group.
Well, see, the reason it came up is there are nonprofits and then there are nonprofits.
Right.
There are different ones in town that are different things. They may fly under the same banner, but they're not necessarily the same thing. So therefore you have, really, thi- this was very difficult, and that's why we would prefer a case-by-case basis. You won't be meetings after meetings because it's gonna be just like this.
So we'd only be doing them at council meetings versus having special ones?
I mean, well, right, just like we do with, we, just like with parades when we waive the, uh, the parade fees for certain groups. Because it, it's very difficult to, to say, okay. What is a community group? What is a nonprofit? What is this, what is that, I mean?
So how do you distinguish with them charging for something and then an event being free to the public? So like, does it not matter as far as the fees charging wise, or should it be said if you're gonna be charging money for items at this event that we have some type of?
Well, in, in those, those were some like comments that came up. A meeting is a meeting, uh, you hold a meeting up here of the historical society, or I'll just throw out there, like the Lions or something like that, right? But then you have an event where they themselves call an event, when you're doing something else and you're holding something. Well, then you're, you're using up that room downstairs. You're gonna book it out, we, the city, somebody else could be renting it, and then where do you draw the line on what is? Somebody says, okay, well, I'm holding an event too, it's my, uh, my son's graduation, or it's, uh, Packers are going to the Super Bowl. Or the Bucks are winning. That ain't gonna happen. But you know, and these are all things that we talked about, and it was very difficult, I, you know, I sat there and looked at numerous city stuff and, and tried to figure it out. And it was, it, well, the best thing we could come up with is just looking at every one of them, at least for right now. And although, as we said, most events, I would say to charge them for, right? Because this is, we're looking at Thursday and it's Monday, and so they had no clue what was going on. I would make a motion to, uh, to, you know, grant a request for a, a waiver of the fees.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, grant a waiver. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Motion carried. Now we go into a whole list of licenses here.
Might, might present aye for a nay or?
A D.
Yeah, there's a nay, okay.
A, A D is the wastewater treatment plant report resolution.
Okay. You all know what this is, but if you don't, it's compliance maintenance annual report, the wastewater treatment plant. And it grades the city on, I believe, seven or eight different items. Kinda like going to school, you got A, B, C, D. The city has got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven As and one Bs, so wastewater treatment plant does very well.
We do have, uh, there's two items, our, our GPA per se is down a little bit from last year. But the one low grade that we have is related to influent flow and loadings, that's what we're building the treatment plant for. And so this is a report on twenty fifteen. And so now we're getting to the point where our treatment plant is up and running, we anticipate that we'll get back to an A in twenty sixteen. And then the only other item that we do have, uh, we have a B on effluent quality for phosphorus, which is, influent is what we're getting in. Effluent is what we're sending discharge into the river. We have a B because in December, there was a day that Aguirre had their chemical feed system down. And we're sending us a load of higher concentrated stuff. And as they sent us a bigger load, we did have a day where we had gone above what is allowed for our phosphorus discharge. But we were on the phone with the DNR, we let them know, they're able to trace it back, obviously, to source. And but because we did have the one day where we went over and above what we're allowed to discharge, uh, we did get a B. Other than that, in all these other areas, we are doing very well for the DNR's guidelines. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you appreciated last year, we didn't go all through the thirty pages of the report, so that's. Just do the real quick and easy report card. So there is a resolution, essentially what you're doing is you're approving the report card, and you'll see that it then becomes resolution number five hundred eighty-three for the city. So a motion on resolution five eighty-three, the compliance maintenance annual report, uh, would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number five eighty-three, the annual compliance maintenance annual report.
Motion made and seconded, approve the CMR annual report. Don't ask any questions, it gets kinda long, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. All right, now we'll get to all the licenses. Class A combination liquor and malt beverage retailers. This is Thirst KDA, Weget Star Dairy, Potagame Co-op, Travel Plaza, we group them together. Thanks for coming, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
I'll make a motion to approve those licenses.
Motion made, seconded, approve those license. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Class B combination liquor and malt beverage, malt beverage license.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded, approve the class B license. All the taverns, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
You do have.
Welcome aboard there, Brian and Leno, welcome aboard, you just got your license approved. Had to sit here for an hour to get to that, but. We gotta get some, uh, part in their license up too one of these days. Get them up before us. Pretty simple, just get them to the chief, he clears them and we approve them.
They'll, they'll be in tomorrow afternoon.
Well, they'll be for next month then, so, okay?
Okay.
Yep, thanks for coming up here.
Thank you very much.
Prove the class A fermented license for Depple Street Station, the Senex.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded, approve class A license for the Senex, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried, approve license, class A intoxicated liquor retail license for Kathy Spiegelberg for Premier Petals.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, now we got a whole list of operators' license. Anybody got any questions on them, you've had this to look at, Jerry, you approved them all, haven't you?
Two comments, one, Joyce Neese is approved, but I did not put the check mark in the approved box, which I'll see Becky tomorrow. Two people saw that, and the other thing that's just worth mentioning is that the two individuals that petitioned you last year, especially for their licenses, have had no violations in the last year.
Oh, special ones?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
They're in good standing.
Any got a motion on them?
Make a motion to accept the operator's license as listed.
Motion made, seconded, approve the operator's license as listed.
I need to abstain from this one as well.
You got what? I didn't hear that.
I have to abstain from the vote.
Oh, you have to abstain, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. And approve the following cigarette license. Same business places, basically.
Can I make a motion to approve those?
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
I'll sit next to you because I can't stand smoking.
Okay. Motion carried, thank you. Mayor's report. I really haven't got much other than that, I, I like our new parking lot up by the park up there, that turned out real nice. Been down the wastewater treatment plant, I think them guys cleaned that up pretty nice, it really looks good, parking lot, we got a lot of compliments on the parking lot already. And even though we haven't had an open house, we got an awful lot of people liking this place already, so. And our, uh, construction season is just about done, huh? We're looking for the final, final on everything, and these meetings will go a whole lot easier. Other than that, I got nothing else. Administrator.
Talked a little bit about the technology in this building, the community room is all up and running, which is the last piece for audiovisual downstairs. So that will be in order for Thursday night. The contingency we had was maybe projectors and screens, but we will be able to use the room for Thursday night. This room, we did apartment here right up until six o'clock, everything is up and running in this room. The question of the day was, what is this box up here? In a couple meetings, uh, we have a hearing assistance program or a, some equipment where people will be able to, to plug into our microphones, uh, if they're hard hearing. And that's what enables that.
I was gonna say, you.
But, um. These systems are, are up and running, we didn't want to, knowing that we had the award, which was a very good, uh, event, and had a good turnout for that, and it was well deserved. We didn't want to have a choppy meeting here, and the systems are pretty much good to go, but we do have a couple of pickups yet. And so we just decided to not run it tonight. So we're running off of the old camp quarter, so I apologize on that, but we feel it was important to make sure we got quality video because that, that award was definitely a quality moment for the city and for Adam and his family and the department. The only other item I have is next Monday, the fire department, as part of their annual projects at the park, they will be painting the swim lake house. And other than the concession stand, I think then, and one bathroom, we should have most of the buildings in the park in accordance with the color scheme that we had passed in twenty thirteen. What we're looking for was the gray and like the green, uh, and that's the colors we're gonna put on the swim house. The fire department is also going to put new soft fascia on the building, which is going to be, it's overdue really on that building. So that should be a good thing, we're gonna start them early in the morning Monday. The swim lake's gonna be open, but we're gonna make it work because the value we're getting from that donated labor is huge. Other than that, uh, we just have a reminder that July ninth is going to be the open house at City Hall at ten AM. We're also gonna have the campsite open, roughly ten to noon, ten to one. So everybody should be invited for that. That's all I have.
Fireworks on the third.
Yes, fireworks, uh, and the, the band, I'm sorry, the band Paper City Trio, uh, will play for the fireworks up at the park, it's Sunday, July third.
The third.
The third house.
Yep.
Jerry, you got the floor?
Big part.
Do it.
College part.
The only thing noteworthy, uh, one of our officers working last night was pursuing a speeder of fifty-one miles an hour on Pine Street. Went over the railroad tracks and he was hit by a deer. So we have our short bus in the shop getting estimates. No injuries.
Well, the squad was hit by a deer.
Yeah, right in the front end. That's it, it was a relatively quiet month, but, uh, we're seeing the increase in transient traffic. Some complaints came in over the weekend of strange people being in town, but that's no different than any other year with the campers coming through and stopping at Star Dairy and just doing what they do. So it's busy, it was a busy weekend, but call volume was low.
Okay, other banners, this is authorized by law, I don't know of any that anybody's got. Set the calendar.
Uh, let's see, Public Works has been set for Monday, July eleventh at six thirty.
Finance right after.
Finance will be after on the eleventh. Um, police and rec, I believe, are scheduled for Tuesday, the twelfth.
Right.
We didn't, I don't think we said it, but we, I think we talked a lot of, because we'll cross, it's like up to show up on the twelfth, that police.
Are they coming?
Mm-hmm.
What time, you want to rec first, I assume?
Uh, we were lining up police first, knowing that go across and.
Right, because we go across.
Fire chief wants to be here too.
Okay.
I thought that would be easier.
Do that first.
Yeah.
So what time? Six?
Six.
Six thirty?
That's fine.
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Call, say proof, it's on them.
Okay, six thirty.
That's fine.
And then rec will be?
Immediate following.
To follow. And the only one then would be council on the eighteenth.
Can we get an ordinance meeting to look at that, uh, parking lot?
Parking.
Parking driveway?
Can we wait until Keith and Richard back around, so I don't have the issues I had trying to get one established for this month?
Yeah, Keith, Keith's gonna be back by the end of the week.
So we'll set something up, but I'll wait until those guys get back, because I, it did work out last time, so.
I understand that.
We do have a, there's a sign current, permanent application that came in for the building we moved out of.
Yeah.
So we're waiting for planning commission.
So when you want that?
The eighteenth.
Planning commission's usually on Wednesday, isn't it?
Usually on Wednesday.
I'm not losing charge of the planning commission.
Any day is good for me.
Okay, Tuesday. You said Tuesday wasn't good. No, Wednesday works.
You're gonna do either the sixth or the thirteenth, or.
Well, I got call in the morning, put that up in the morning. What about me?
I'd say the, the thirteenth would probably be good.
The thirteenth?
That works.
I will call the other members to issue.
Yeah.
Next, twenty-ninth might not give them enough notice.
Yeah.
And the sixth, they might be lucky, get it down.
Yeah, of course, just a holiday, yeah.
The, the public property. We have a potential update down by the, by Mountain Avenue, neighboring some property that we have already, so.
City Hall and Houses on the ninth, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
In the hours?
Ten till one. Ten AM on a Saturday. Think Rich is the chair of public property. Check with his schedule too. Go check offline and then, then schedule a date.
Should everything for meetings?
Okay, you got them?
Mm-hmm.
Want to take a break before we go into closed session?
We're gonna make, make a motion and then maybe take a quick break or whatever.
Make, I'll, I'll make, you gotta make motions before you do this. We'll go fast. I'll make a motion if we go into closed session. Pursuant to state statute nineteen eighty-five, subterfuge one, G, conferring as legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategies to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, in which it is or is, is or is likely, or is.
In which it is involved or is likely to be involved.
That's not what it says. The reason for this closed session is discuss strategy in addressing circuit court appeals by Canadian National Railroad related to the municipal court's decision in favor of the city of Waiiga on ordinances regarding the blocking of intersections by trains. Council may choose to re- convene an open session at the completion of a closed session in order to take action on the items in closed session. And also, conferring as legal counsel in the government body who is rendering the oral or written advice concerning strategy be adopted by the body. who is rendering the oral or written advice concerning strategy be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which is or is likely to become involved. Recent closed sessions discussed settlement on general contract or claim related to municipal building project construction. The council may choose to reconvene in open session at the completion of a closed session in order to take actions from a closed session.
Good job.
I'll second all that.
Motion made and seconded. The movement of closed session. All in favor say aye. For the whole call.
For the call. Bruce Cage?
Aye.
Jeanne Appleby? Aye. Nick Gunderson?
Aye.
Mike Cameron?
All right.
At seven forty-four, we're gonna take a quick break, and also, it is likely that we will not be going into open session after.